Please, we continue to celebrate. His Excellency and of course, the Honorable Minister. Welcome all of them. Your Excellency, please, for us to get this started officially today, we will take the National Anthem. The first verse, please. Please indulge as we take the anthem of the host state, Akwaboom State. The Akwaboom State Anthem, the first verse. Thank you very much. Please, we can take our seats. We celebrate all our leaders and we celebrate all of you. Thank you so much. Truly honored to have all of us present and truly honored that we're already seated and organized for this event. Your Excellency, the Governor of Akwaboom State and our very amazing guests and hosts, the Honorable Minister, the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation. I'd like to welcome all of us to the opening ceremonies of this amazing meeting of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation, being hosted here in Ibumhol Arena in Akwaboom State. Your Excellency, before your arrival, lots of introductions were made. Lots and almost all our guests here were honored and we truly want to appreciate all of them who came out quite on time and those of them who have come here with His Excellency, the Governor. You are honored and you are appreciated. I'd like to ask that we put our hands together just to formally set the protocol for this event as we welcome the host Governor, His Excellency, the Governor of Akwaboom State. Please, can we celebrate him some more? Celebrate him some more? Thank you so much. We truly do appreciate our Governor. Let me also ask that we acknowledge the presence of the hosts, our chief guests in Akwaboom State for this particular meeting. Please, can we celebrate? Engineer Professor Joseph Telumun Utev, the Honorable Minister, the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation. Your Excellency, the applause from council members and those joining for this meeting shows that this gentleman is a great leader, loved by those he's leading and of course, is representing the President of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in very great light. Can we one more time, please, put our hands together and celebrate him? Thank you, sir. I note that he smiles always, all the time and has already inducted all of us as members of the water family. Please, can we celebrate him one more time? Thank you so much. Please, you permit, as had earlier indicated, that we do not go through the rigors of introductions again since we'd already done it. We acknowledge all members of the House of Representatives, particularly the Chairman of the House Committee on Water Resources. We acknowledge his esteemed presence and we celebrate you in Akwaboom State. We acknowledge also respectfully all the guests who have come with His Excellency, the Governor, the Chairman of the People's Democratic Party, the Secretary to the State Government and all the other distinguished guests, the Head of Service, distinguished Senators and stakeholders of Akwaboom State who are here. We celebrate and honor you. And let me end these protocols setting as it were by acknowledging the Permanent Secretary of the Federal Ministry of Water Resources, who has been here all through. Please, can we put our hands together and celebrate the Permanent Secretary, Richard Felangwa, Permanent Secretary, we celebrate you. And of course, our own Permanent Secretary of the Ministry here in Akwaboom State. Please, can we also put our hands together and celebrate her? Thank you, thank you so much. Your Excellency, for this part, which is basically the opening ceremonies, we're going to have the address by the Honorable Minister, after which we would have the vote of fangs by the Permanent Secretary and then would have His Excellency, the Host Governor, speak to declare this meeting open and then we can stand down this part and continue with the deliberations of the meetings thereafter. Your Excellency, having just given an indication of what this event would be like, let me invite my colleague all the way from Abuja. Let him walk in Akwaboom so he can earn his pay in Abuja. Please, can we put our hands together and celebrate him as he invites the Honorable Minister for the keynote address? Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you. Without much ado, ladies and gentlemen, for one of time, I'll quickly invite the personality that will take the keynote address. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, he's a fine, hardworking gentleman that worked very tirelessly to distinguish himself in academics. Ladies and gentlemen, it will interest you to know that he had his first degree in civil engineering, master degree in water engineering and become a professor of water and civil engineering. Your Excellency, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, besides, he is an administrator and entrepreneur extraordinary. All this put together are saying him a permanent place in politics. Today, he is a good essential politician. Your Excellency, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, introduce to us the Honorable Minister of Water Resources and Sanitation, Engineer Professor Joseph Telumun Utev, fellow Nigerian Society of Engineers, fellow Nigerian Institution of Civil Engineer, fellow Nigerian Institution of Water Engineer. To please come and take his keynote address, celebrate him, ladies and gentlemen.
Your Excellency, the Executive Governor of Akwaboom State, Pastor Omo Basse Enor, PhD, the Chairman, House Committee on Water Resources and Sanitation, Rights Honorable Sada Soli, here representing members of the National Assembly and all members present and former of the National Assembly that are here present, the Secretary to the State Government of Akwaboom State and other executive council members that are here present, the Permanent Secretary, Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation, the Directors and former Directors from the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation here present, the Head of Agencies from the Federal Ministries of Water Resources and Sanitation here present, all honorable Commissioners from the various states that are here present, our party leaders that are here present, all traditional and the clergy that are here present, our development partners, professional members that are here present, invited guests, the press, ladies and gentlemen. Today, we are here at Akwaboom State for the 31st Regular Meeting of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation. We are here because at our 38th Meeting of the National Council, which was held in Abuja. After the communique, Akwaboom State accepted to host us for the 2024 Regular Meeting of National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation. Thank you, Excellency, for accepting to host us and we are here in Akwaboom State for some days back. The technical session has commenced and concluded and today is the council meeting proper. It gives me a great pleasure to address you today at this auspicious occasion of the 31st Regular Meeting of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation, which is the apex authority responsible for shaping the strategic direction of the water and sanitation sector in Nigeria. Distinguished council members and stakeholders, you will recall that the decision to hold this was taken at our 38th Regular Meeting, which was held in Abuja, the Federal Capital Territory. I wish to express our profound gratitude to His Excellency, Pastor Omo Basse Enor Phezi, the Executive Governor of Akwaboom State for graciously accepting to host the 31st Regular Meeting of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation. We appreciate the efforts, our resources expended by the State Government towards ensuring the success of this event. Distinguished Members and invited guests, the team of the 31st National Council Meeting, Water and Food Security, Challenges and Opportunities in the Face of Doubting Climate Change is highly relevant in today's context, considering the devastating impact of climate change on global food systems. This has made water scarcity to significantly affect human well-being, agricultural productivity, and ultimately food availability. From available records, the United Nations estimate that about 29% of the global population lives in countries with limited access to clean water, which can lead to head challenges, higher cost of living and lower productivity. The scenario in Africa is projected to be more severe with climate change likely to reduce crop yields by up to 20% in year 2050 with dear consequences of food security, economic growth, human development, which if necessary precautionary measures are not taken to address this challenge, this problem will be imminent. Ladies and gentlemen, Water Resource Management is a function on the concurrent legislative list in the Nigerian Constitution, which empowers both the federal and state governments to manage and regulate within their respective jurisdictions. This shared responsibility requires close collaboration and coordination between the national and sub-nationals to ensure its effective management and sustainable use. Therefore, the Council has the apex authority remains the best forum created by a brainstorm and fashion of ways to ensure the management of the nation's water resources in a sustainable, equitable and efficient manner to support the country's socio-economic development, human well-being and environmental sustainability. Distinguished council members, in line with presidential priorities, our quest for the attainment of the Sustainable Development Goals II, which talks about food security and zero hunger, SDG six, which is about access to safe water and sanitation, eight, which is to promote promoting economic growth, employment and decent work for all people, and SDG thirteen, which is about an urgent action to combat climate change and its impact. The Ministry is currently focusing on improving water and food security, improving sanitation and hygiene as well as enhancing climate resilience strategies to stakeholders' engagement, collaborations and partnerships with relevant establishments. Therefore, to meet the aspirations of President Bola Ametinebo's Renew Hope Agenda and the Declaration of State of Emergency on Food Security, the Ministry is leveraging programs and partnerships aims at revitalizing Nigerians' integrated agricultural landscape, boosting food security, alleviating poverty, creating jobs and propelling economic growth. Permission to stand, to state that the Ministry has continued to work towards a revitalization sustainability of the water supply subsector, providing strategic guidance for the effective delivery of water, sanitation and hygiene services across the nation. Some significant progress made by the Ministry since the last council meeting held in February 2024 in Abuja are highlighted below. One is in the area of water supply. The Ministry has accomplished over 40 different projects across rural, small town and urban water supply. Other achievements include construction of 44 projects under the Partnership for Expanded Water Supply, sanitation and hygiene, which is the P Wash Program, completion of 45 projects under the Sustainable Urban and Rural Water Supply, sanitation and hygiene, which is the So Wash Program, implementation of 64 projects funded by the African Development Bank under the Inclusive Basic Delivery System for Development and Livelihood Empowerment Improvement Project, award of 113 contracts for water supply, which are currently at various stages of construction. The revised National Action Plan for the revitalization of the water sector to provide the Washington Impetus in achieving SDGs and we are also in the process of developing the national water policy in Nigeria in collaboration with the Federal Ministry of Environment and other stakeholders. Under the water quality, sanitation and hygiene, the Ministry was able to achieve the following. One, we have completed the building of a SABA and Amwaya National Water Quality Reference Laboratories, while the process of equipping the laboratories is ongoing. We have also developed a finer drought for mitigation and contingency plans for polluted water bodies bodies in Nigeria under the Fresh Water Restoration and Resource Water Protection Program. The development of FOT and FIFTY Report on Atlas of Rivers and Open Water Bodies Monitoring Activities has also been accomplished. Under the Clean Nigeria Campaign Program, we have achieved the following. We have launched the Clean Nigeria Use the Toilet to Address the Menace of Open Defication in the Country. 142 local government has been validated and declared open defecation free with implementations still ongoing across communities in the country. We have developed the ODF Jingu's Assesitization Strategy in five languages, which are mainly English, Pigeon, Igbo, Hausa and Yoruba, which are heard weekly on radio and television, reaching over 25 million Nigeria across all the states, including FCT. And we have also embarked on a presidential launch of the revised Clean Nigeria Campaign Implementation Strategy to us and Open Defication Free Nigeria by the year 2030. Under the urban sanitation, the Ministry has introduced nature-based solutions, a climate-smart wastewater treatment process to the Gwembe State Government and other stakeholders within the state's water and sanitation sector. We have also carried out sanitation safety plan visit in Gigawa and Sukuto States to ascertain the safety measures applied by the state in the handling of hazardous wastes from wastewater and other fecal sludge management. On the water response and tracking, the Ministry in collaboration with National Center for Disease Control was able to respond to the recent cholera outbreak in Lagos to construct additional dams across the country to expand water storage capacity as measures to control flood and enhance food security through irrigation. The Ministry has processed the study and design for other construction and rehabilitation of Durra Dam in Benue State, Lafayette Dam in Nasawa State, Lado Dam in Oyo State, the Gamara Dam in Batu State and also the Dasi Hausa Dam that is expected to contain the excess water that flows out of the Lado Dam from Cameroon. Priority, the completion of dams that have attained over 80% completion level, such as Mango Dam in Platu State and Obese Dam in Ekiti State, we are believing will be done by the year 2025. The Ministry is currently embarking on evaluation of all dams in Nigeria to mitigate the devastating effects of flooding from dams on national lives and assets. Under the irrigation and food security aspect, as we all know, irrigation plays a critical role in food security, economic growth, job creation and poverty reduction. The fully have been achieved in the period under review. One, we have completed the Dadi Kowa and Baklory irrigation schemes under the trimming as well as the drip and micro irrigation projects. Plans to complete this year, the Midurima Valley Irrigation Phase Two has reached 90% completed. Some new irrigation projects has been procured for implementation, such as the Ikowa Irrigation Project in Ondo State, the Dukul Lade Drip Irrigation Project in Korra State, the Makoli Drip Irrigation Project in Benue State, we have the KB Drip Irrigation in KB, the Edo Micro Irrigation Project in Edo State, the Adamawa Micro Irrigation Project in Adamo State and additional works for a purple micro irrigation project in Oyo State. We have also hosted the fourth Regional Workshop on the Establishment and Strengthening of Water Users Association in Oyo Akwaboom State to promote all-inclusive participatory irrigation management and we also participated in the 75th International Executive Council Meeting and Ninth Asian Regional Conference of International Commission on Irrigation and Drainage held at Sydney, Australia, which was held between 1st to 7th of September in 2024. And we have commenced preparations to host the upcoming ICID Six African Regional Conference in Irrigation and Drainage to be held in Abuja, Nigeria from 14th to 18th of April in this year. We have also commenced the preparation for the Sustainable Power and Irrigation for Nigeria, which is SPIM Project in collaboration with the World Bank. The project which is commenced, which is to commence this year and is aimed to secure and maximize the socio-economic value of stored water and will leverage the success story and close the gaps identified during the implementation of the Transforming Irrigation Management in Nigeria Training Project. Under our River Business Development Authorities, the RBDAs, the total available irrigable land developed so far by the RBDAs stands at 153,090 hectares, where continuous efforts are being made towards strengthening the river business to deliver more on the set targets. Other commendable activities carried out so far as follows. There is an ongoing implementation of the partial commercialization of the four pilot RBDAs with advertisement for procurement. with advertisement for procurement of some selected projects. We are upscaling the advocacy of the head of our rivers through the annual celebration of the World Rivers Day across the country. We have also commenced the process for implementation of the Ministry's flagship programs on poverty alleviation, expanding water supply for irrigable agriculture and promoting collaboration and partnership towards enhancing irrigation development across the river basins. There is also continuous engagement of the twelve river basins in the implementation of the Songai Integrated Farming Model to boost food production, create jobs and employment of our unemployed Nigerians across the river basins. In the area of adaptation to climate change, the Ministry in collaboration with UNICEF has embarked on the process to produce the document Climate Ratio Air for Wash Services in Nigeria. This will help to identify the different climate risk vulnerabilities associated with the different geopolitical zones of the country and applicable solutions to ensure resilience and adaptation. Jingu's have been developed on radios and televisions to educate the populace on actions to mitigate flood and droughts in Nigeria. On our public-private partnership basis, the Ministry attracted private sector investment, investors for the development of some identified PPP projects in hydro power project development in collaboration with other MDAs, while the river basins are encouraged to venture into the PPP initiatives. Some laudable programs and progresses made so far are as follows. One, there is significant progress which has been made in the brown and green feed hydro power development. We have developed the three hundred and sixty megawatts cholera phase two hydro power projects in Niger State, which is at the EPC contract awarded and the Federal Executive Council approval for the concession of operation and maintenance of the power plants through PPP model has also been secured. The development and concession of the four hundred and sixty megawatts Kasnala Hydro Power Projects in Benue State and the development of twenty megawatts Farinua Hydro Power Plant Project in Nasawo State has also reached the procurement processes and this has reached the stage of negotiation at the draft concession agreement with the proponent prior to the Federal Executive Council's approval. The development and concession of one hundred and thirty-six megawatts Maya and one hundred and twenty, one hundred and eighty-two megawatts Bawaku Hydro Power Projects in Taraba and Benue State respectively has also reached advanced stage of its procurement processes. Under the National Water Resources Institute, our agency, the agency in Kaduna met all its capacity building and research in the water resources sector, which is building the capacity of engineers, scientists, technologists and technicians. The institute offers training programs in different courses leading to the award of national diploma and higher national diploma, which runs specialized, postgraduate diploma and masters of science programs in collaboration with the Nigerian Defense Academy and capacity building network university centers. Other progress made so far by the institute are as follows. The institute proposed as a regional training center of the World Meteorological Organization. All the necessary self-assessment procedures and project defense have been completed by the World Member Organization delegation from Geneva in November 2024, which is now, we are now awaiting the final results or the assessment and recommendations for capacity building activities in operational hydrology. University of Life Force UK has offered to collaborate and partner with the institute to conduct comprehensive catchment studies incorporating local environmental knowledge. And the MOU proposed joint establishment of Knowledge Transfer Center at the institute to coordinate masters and doctorate training programs to build capacity, conduct applied research at masters, doctorate and postdoctorate levels and short courses on dam safety, reservoir sanitation, catchment management, behavioral management, sediment transport and erosion and soil health are ongoing. Under the Nigeria Hydrological Services Agency, the agency was able to issue forecasts prompt before the onset of the rainy season to serve as preventive measures necessary to improve the safety of lives and property. I presented the twelfth edition of the annual flood outlook to the public on the sixteenth of May in 2024. To further achieve its objectives, the agency embarked on flood campaigns in the eight hydrological areas across the country, particularly in the eight hydrological areas that were marked as high-risk flood areas, heard press conferences and workshops. Other activities engaged by the agencies were sediment yield transport studies, which was carried out on Kanji Dam, resuscitation of the UNESCO IHP by, by, by Anua Sipozum, a meeting of the Nigerian National Committee for UNESCO IHP was held. The agency also intensified discharge measurements for improved access to coherent national hydrometric data for effective water research and management and provision of better hydrological forecast and assessment. And the agency is also monitoring and evaluating all hydrological stations across the country as well as flood forecasting to avoid issues of flooding in the country. Under the Nigeria Integrated Water Resources Management Commission, the commission which implement policies under the, on the management of water resources Nigeria has the responsibility of issuing licenses for bulk water users for different purposes. It has been made to establish its data bank, develop the national water footprint and expanded protocol on enforcement against water use charges defaulters. Dear the Sumis council members, ladies and gentlemen, I have no doubt that this thirty-first session of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation will come up with practicable and enforceable policies that will enable the water and sanitation sector achieve the relevant component of the Renew Hope Agenda of the present administration and the Sustainable Development Goals. I cannot end this address without specifically appreciating His Excellency, President Bola Ahmed Tinibou GCFR for the massive support and approval of programs of the ministry. I also recognize the presence of the House Committee Chairman of Water Resources and Sanitation, representative of the Chairman of Senate Committee and other national assembly members, both present and former that are here and other members of the parliament, both at the state level. I am sure that the sector will continue to enjoy your support as always. I sincerely appreciate all our donors and development partners for their sustained efforts in funding water and sanitation projects and programs in Nigeria. We shall continue to work together to achieve the target set by the current administration in the areas of resource development, sanitation and food security. Let me conclude by appreciating council members once more honoring our invitation to this meeting. Our honourable commissioners in charge of water resources in their respective states not to relent in your major role of improving the Nigerians' integrated agricultural landscape, boosting food security, alleviating poverty, creating jobs, propelling economic growth. I also appeal to all others the traditional of the National Council on Water Resources, of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation. Thank you, Your Excellencies, council members, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, the Honourable Minister. We appreciate you and we thank you. Your Excellency, that was not just an address, that was a treatise on everything water. And Your Excellency, but not for the principle of separation of power. You would have said that his address has covered the field everywhere. But please you permit, Your Excellency, that we will take the goodwill message. I had a list of about seven persons for goodwill message. We'll take just one from the Chairman of the House Committee on Water Resources. Please can we celebrate the very smart-looking, honorable Sadasuli all the way from Katzina State in Akwabom State today? But we have something in common, both states created on the same day. So he's an Akwabomite. Can we celebrate him some more for his very brief goodwill message? Thank you.
Thank you very much for flattering me. Your Excellency, the Governor of Akwabom State, Pastor Umo Basie Enno, PhD. The Honourable Minister of Water Resources, members of the National Assembly present here. Your Excellency, permit me to identify one member of the National Assembly who has been my boss for over a decade in the person of distinguished Senator Ephiam Bob, who is the son of the Shoye. The council members. I'm very delighted to represent the tenth House of Representatives and indeed the National Assembly to present this goodwill message in this all-important event. The thirty-first regular National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation with the theme Water in Food Security: Challenges and Opportunities in the Face of Downton Climate Change. Why water? It's only one commodity that I'm sure every morning world over people use. I don't think there is one person in this hall that has not used water this morning. That is the importance of water in human existence. So it's not for granted. The theme is very apt considering the ever-increasing awareness on the need for sustainable development of water resources for various purposes such as agriculture, industrial and domestic uses, especially with appalling climate change that confronts the whole world. Let me commend His Excellency, the Governor of Akwabom State, for providing this platform to host this council meeting. Your Excellency, we thank you for your hospitality and your kind disposition. Let me also thank the organizers of this year's National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation for their commitment and zeal to develop an acceptable roadmap for water resources management in our country. As you are all aware, the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation is the highest policymaking body in Nigeria for the water and sanitation management. It is no longer news that our nation is blessed with abundant water resources to harness for the good of our people. Regrettably, our problem had been effective management of these resources for our own benefit. I have the hope that the thirty-first Regular National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation will address all the various challenges militating against proper management and harnessing of our God-given resources through building partnership for effective flood management and resource allocation, enhancing public awareness on water safety and hygiene, exploring investment opportunities and enhancing water infrastructure and sustainability. Distinguished participants and council members and other stakeholders, the National Assembly has always been at the forefront of developing the framework to pave ways for effective water resources development and management. And it has demonstrated that in the course of its constitutional responsibilities of lawmaking and oversight, not minding that water resources matters are in the concurrent list. The National Assembly, through the improved budgetary allocation to both the ministry and the river basins, has achieved numerous developmental projects through the construction of dams, flood and erosion control projects and water supply schemes across the country. Accordingly, this council should be decisive moment, should be a decisive moment in our collective quest to sanitize the water sector and add value to our national life which the National Assembly has always been advocating for. Therefore, I have no doubt that this event should be able to achieve the acceptable unacceptable framework for sustainable water resources management and development. Let me reassure the Honourable Minister and other stakeholders in the water sector that the tenth House of Representatives and indeed the National Assembly is ready to play its role as enshrined in the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in ensuring that all decisions taken at this council are achieved and realized. Once more, on behalf of the House Committee on Water Resources, I wish to commend the conveners of this thirty- of this 31st Regular National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation for organizing this conference. Thank you.
His Excellency, the very amiable Governor of Akwabom State, the sunshine Governor, the talk-and-do Governor, the man that has taken Akwabom State to his third globe. I'll please at this juncture like to invite to do the vote of thanks for this 31st Council of Water Resources. No other person but the Permanent Secretary of the Federal Ministry of Water Resources, Mr. Richard Filangwa.
The Executive Governor of Akwabom State, Your Excellency, Pastor Umo Basie Enno. The Chairman, House Committee on Water Resources and Sanitation, Right Honourable Sada Suli, the Honourable Minister, my own Minister of Water Resources and Sanitation, Engineer Professor Joseph Telumu. Let me stand on the order established protocols because of lack of time. Thank you. To thank people is a very difficult thing to do, especially if you don't know who you're going to miss out and then who you're going to offend. But hopefully, I'll pray to God that I capture everybody in this time. Thank you message. It is with great pleasure and sense of joy that I stand before you all on behalf of the Water Family to appreciate the Almighty God for making it possible for us to successfully witness this 31st meeting of the National Council on Water Resources and Sanitation. I wish to sincerely thank the Honourable Minister of Water Resources and Sanitation, Engineer Professor Telumu, for accelerating the entire preparations for the hosting towards for hosting this 31st National Council meeting. On behalf of the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation and the entire Water Family, I cannot but thank His Excellency, the Executive Governor of Akwabom State, Pastor Umo Basie Enno. Your Excellency, sir. When you assumed duty as Governor, there was something you did that struck a chord in me. I was watching television with my wife and I think you were going around Uyo doing some sanitization. And you got to a junction, where there were bred hawkers. And you addressed them. And then addressing the press, you said you would find it difficult to remove those people from there on that street. That struck a chord in me because, I think so because you said you too did same thing while you were young around that street. And it takes a very humble person who has a purpose, who has a mission to agree on that and admit so in the front of the television. I salute you, sir, and you have not failed your people. Please put your hand round of applause for the Governor. Thank you very much, sir. That struck a chord in me up till today. When I see you on television, I sit tight to watch what you're saying. Continue, sir. Thank you very much. I also I also commend all government officials from the state's Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation and its agencies for all the efforts made towards the successful hosting of this August gathering. With great sense of respect, therefore, I warmly recognize the presence of the Chairman, House Committee on Water Resources and Sanitation. The time spent here with us is an indication of your strong commitment, support to the cause of water, of the water sector. I will now relent in thanking all the development partners who have been with us since the commencement of the program. You have demonstrated your commitment towards the actualization of our cause in the Water Family. To all the participants from the federal and state government establishment, especially our distinguished Honourable Commissioners, the Permanent Secretaries and the heads of agencies from the 36th State of the Federation, including the Federal Capitulatory, we are highly encouraged by your presence and obligatory rules. I wish to further extend our special gratitude for the presence and contributions of all the managing directors of the River Basin Development Authority, general managers of state water boats, Chairman and Men- Member of the Chairman and Members of the Ministerial Policy Advisory Committee on Water and Sanitation, Chairman and Members of the various national technical subcommittees, resource persons, the media and the gentlemen of the press. To all those who worked behind the scenes to make the occasion memorable one, words cannot express the appreciation our appreciation. I pray that God will reward each and every one of us. As we all journey back to our respective places of our assignment, I pray the Almighty God will take us safely. And thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, the Permanent Secretary of the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation. We appreciate you. One thing about our governor, our leader is that he's completely sincere and hawks his personality with pride. He knows how to abaze. He knows how to abound. He's a governor today, but he remember remembers everywhere, every time where he came from. Your Excellency, yesterday we had a man from Abia State who was waiting for 2027 to come and vote for you in Akwabom State. Today, today with the way the Permanent Secretary sounds, I wouldn't be surprised if he relocates his voters' card and everything to Akwabom State. We'll give you a polling unit in Orogonam. Your Excellency, the hour has come for us to hear from you, Governor of Land and Water, because all of us are now members of the Water Family. Please can we put our hands together, celebrate and welcome His Excellency, the Governor of Adia State, Leader by salon, one we respect, one we revere, one we honor and one we celebrate. Thank you so much as you speak to declare this annual meeting open. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please let's take our seats. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. The Honourable Minister, Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation, Engineer Professor Joseph Ussef. Distinguished Senators and Members of the House of Representatives that are here with us, especially the Chairman, House Committee on Water Resources. The Chairman of our party in Akwabom State, the People's Democratic Party, Right Honourable Elder Anekan Akman, other executive members of IPAC, Akwabom State that are here. Principal Officers and Honourable Members of the Akwabom State House of Assembly that are here with us. Permanent Secretary, Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation, Secretary to the State Government, the Head of the Civil Service, Honourable Commissioners from other states that have joined us here, immediate past Commissioners and Members of the State Executive Council of Akwabom State Government, especially the immediate past Commissioner for Water Resources and Sanitation in Akwabom Doctor Mbobo that is here with us. Honorable Special Advisors, Managing Directors and Directors, DGs of River Basin Authority, Service Commanders, both serving and retired, Captains of Industry, professional bodies, including the Akwabom professional, water professionals that are here. Chairman of Boards and Commissions, Permanent Secretaries, Heads of Extra Ministerial Departments, especially the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Water Resources Akwabom State, the Chairman and Vice Chairman of Local Government Councils, Clergymen and Fathers in the faith that are here, Senior Citizens, Critical Stakeholders, Labor Leaders, Participants and organizers of this event, Members of the Fort State of the Realm, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure and honor to welcome the Honourable Minister for Water Resources and Sanitation and his delegation to Akwabom State, the land of promise, as we gather this afternoon for the 31st Regular Meeting of the National Council of Water Resources and Sanitation, the highest decision-making body for the water, sanitation and hygiene wash sector in the country. Let me express my deepest appreciation and gratitude to the Council and the Federal Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation for choosing Uyo as state capital to host this national event. Let me thank particularly the immediate past Commissioner for Water Resources that has championed this campaign to host this event and has accepted to represent me ably even while the Executive Council has been dissolved. Thank you so much, Dr. Mbobo, for all you have done and doing to promote water and sanitation in our state. Let me thank the Permanent Secretary for the Min- of the Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation in Akwabom State for a job well done. Our ability to plug in where the Honourable Commissioner left off is highly commendable. And I want to thank you. Let me thank the Akwabom State Ministry of Water Resources for coming together to ensure that we continue to be very good hosts to our guests. And the Honourable Minister for Water Resources have already commended you and I'd like to thank you for making us proud. Thank you, Ministry of Water Resources. The theme for this regular meeting, Water and Food Security: Challenges and Opportunities in the Face of Downton Climate Change, resonates deeply in administration's policy trust, the Arise Agenda, which prioritizes agricultural revolution for food security and sufficiency, rural development, infrastructural expansion and maintenance, security management and educational advancement. The Arise Agenda aligns perfectly with the renewed hope agenda of President Bola Ahmed Tinubu, GCFR. And we we are committed to working tirelessly to ensure that our citizens benefit from the initiatives and programs outlined in the President's bold agenda, especially those that relate to water, agriculture and environment. Our commitment to food security and food sufficiency is unwavering and we recognize the critical role water resources play in achieving this goal, such as in irrigation, livestock production, crop growth, food processing, fisheries and aquaculture, soil health, climate regulation and change, as well as rural development. Our commitment as an administration has consequently made significant strides in reforming and strengthening the institutional framework for water resources in our state. Before God brought me here to my current position, I was the Commissioner for Lands and Water Resources in the state. So I have an acute understanding of the issues surrounding water management. We have established a standalone ministry for the wash sector, the Ministry of Water Resources and Sanitation, for the first time in the history of our state. That is because as Commissioner for Lands and Water Resources, I realize the enormous work that both arms do. As a Commissioner for Land, you will hardly have time to finish land issues, not to talk of looking at water issues. So when God brought me as Governor, I realized one of the things I needed to do was to create that standalone ministry to align not only with the federal government, but to be able to face water resources and sanitation issues squarely. The Ministry with its parasaddle and agencies, the Akwabom Water Company Limited and the Akwabom Rural Water Supply and Sanitation Agency, AKUATSE, are responsible for providing safe and affordable water and sanitation services to our citizens in line with the Akwabom State Water Resources Sector Management and Regulation Law 2022. Additionally, we have implemented some initiatives aimed at improving water, sanitation and hygiene practices, such as construction of public water and toilet facilities in our schools, health facilities and markets. We have indicated interest in the Sustainable Power Irrigation in Nigeria spin project, which promises to enhance agricultural productivity and improve the livelihoods of farmers. We have made a commitment of 200 million naira and have chosen to partner with Cross River Basin Development Authority under Model One. We look forward to collaborating with the federal government and development partners to bring this project to fruition. As we deliberate on the challenges of climate change, I want to bring to your attention the plight of our abandoned dams, Nkari and Ibyonibom in the local government and Ibyonibom local government areas of our state. These dams once envisioned to drive agricultural growth and economic prosperity, now life-determined and abandoned, a testament to the neglect of our water resources. I'm however hurtened by the assurances the Honourable Minister gave me yesterday during his courtesy visit that the dams will soon be reactivated. As a state, we are ready to give our support in this direction. Climate change remains a significant threat to our water and food security. Rising temperatures, changing rainfall patterns and increased frequency of extreme weather events, all pose serious challenges to agricultural sector and water resources. To address these challenges, our administration has implemented several initiatives aimed at mitigating the impact of climate change, including the setting up of Flood Mitigation Committee headed by the Deputy Governor. The capacitation and resourcing of the Akwabom State Environmental Protection and Waste Management Agency to manage waste, distill gutters and drains, thereby reducing the impact of flood and the conversion of the Goli Erosion Site along Dominique Utuk Avenue to a world-class family theme park, which we hope to invite the Honourable Minister later in the year to the official commissioning of the theme park. I'd like to say that the Honourable Minister raised this yesterday that our states have not progressed in the certification certification. not progressed in the certification certification. Up until now, we still have one local government, and therefore directing the Ministry of Water Resources to create a wash unit and department. I'd like to meet the head of unit as quickly as possible, so we can work with the Permanent Secretary on how to collaborate with the ministry, to federal ministry, to ensure that we resume programs that before the end of the year will see many more local governments become open certification free, and that should be done in the next two weeks. The Permanent Secretary has that mandate. I'd like to make that meeting, make that meeting available, so we can link up with the ministry. I remember as Commissioner, we had the wash team and a focal person come from the federal to work with us. Since I left the ministry, I don't know what happened, but now that the Honourable Minister has raised it, I think we need to pursue it, and we'll be coming to you soon, like I promised you yesterday. We'll be submitting a brief in the next one month of the progress we have made in all of this direction. Our job as a state is to collaborate with the federal government, to ensure that we bring the benefits of programs to our people, and that is what we'll continue to do. Finally, I want to reiterate administration's commitment to addressing the challenges of water and food security in the face of climate change. We recognize that these challenges require collective response, and we invite everyone in this room and beyond to join effort with both the federal and state government, so that together we can build a more resilient and sustainable future for all Nigerians. While wishing you a successful deliberation at this council meeting, let me assure you that we will implement the conclusions from this meeting and work closely with the federal government and development partners to ensure that our water and food security initiatives are productive. And therefore, on behalf of the government and people of Akwabom State, welcome you heartily, and on that note, declare the 31st Regular Meeting of the Council open, in the name of God the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you. May God bless Akwabom State, may God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The cultural drums, they're coming to say that we know his voice, that he is our leader. Thank you so much, Your Excellency, the Governor. We will take the national anthem to close this part of this event. After the anthem, Your Excellency, please, the Honourable Minister will just come down to take a group photograph in front here, and then after the anthem, please, we'll take a group photograph here and then we can then step out. To end, please, the national anthem, first verse on.
Nigeria, we build the our frontier, the land, all choice and tolls, maybe, where the brotherhood we stand, my years of our ground to save our suffering on the land.
Thank you very much. We'll come down for the group photograph while the cultural troupe can continue to play. I think that's from the Akwabom State Council for Arts and Culture. Please let the photographers be properly positioned. The cultural troupe, please, let's hear the drums.